Organization of the committee will go into having it be an affirmation of current structure. Thanks.
Motion to approve the affirmation of the current structure.
Second, all those in favor? Thank you. Thank you to the WRPS team for fixing our mics. We appreciate you and are spoiled by you every week. We'll go into the acceptance of the minutes for the meeting of March 24th.
Motion to approve the minutes for March 24th?
Second, would I need to abstain?
Yep, sorry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Great, thank you. Welcome back, Emily.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you here with us tonight. I won't snap, know what you're getting.
No.
Nothing under audience. We'll move on to reports, monthly reports for administrators. We have Ms. Shipper, Mr. McAllister, Ms. Scheifly, and Ms. Sheehan. Under guidance, we have Ms. Black. For the nurse, we have Ms. Davis. And pupil personnel services, we have Dr. Miniglia.
Motion to approve seven monthly reports.
Motion to approve?
Second, can we have a second?
Second.
Second, seven motions to approve the monthly reports.
Thank you. All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you. For school newsletters, we have Esten Phelps, the middle school and the high school. Any comments or questions on the newsletters?
No.
No? Okay, keep moving. Under old business, we have completed fundraisers. Now I didn't We have under National Honor Society, the Rotary Can and Bottle Drive. Sorry, I'm reading the wrong line. We have from the class of 2026, selling sweatpants. They sold $975 worth of sweatpants. So that was awesome. Congratulations to the class of 2026. Now, new business, we have Rockland High School School Curriculum Corner. Ms. Shipper?
Good evening. So I'm very excited tonight to invite Kendra Donovan. She teaches the AP Psych classes. We have two AP Psych classes totaling 48 students. She's brought two students with her here, and they're going to show you a little bit about what they do in her classes.
All right.
So Ms. Donovan, come on up with your students.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
Last year was my first year teaching AP Psychology. I had a really successful year. This is my second year. These guys are part of my crew this year. Really excited to share some of our demos that we do, just to bring the class to life. So they're going to actually walk you through the bulk of the presentation today.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, my name's Leah, and to start off, we're just going to have you, we're going to test your attention. So on the next slide, there's a video, and we'd like you to count the number of passes between players wearing white shirts. This is a test of selective attention. Count how many times the players wearing white pass How many passes did you count?
Ladies?
The correct answer is fifteen.
I said fourteen, I was sixteen.
Melissa won.
The gorilla did a little.
The gorilla distracted me.
I didn't even see the gorilla.
I was busy.
I was trying to count.
That's funny.
That's cute.
What did we learn?
So we learned about inattentional blindness, which is basically when you fail to see objects when your attention is directed elsewhere. So essentially, it is very difficult to multitask, even if you think you can. And humans are really good at focusing, like I said, only on one particular part of the environment.
So the gorilla.
So again, my name's Leah Figurito. I'm in the class of 25.
My name's Emily Dunne, and I'm also in the class of 25.
Yeah. I'm planning to study next year at Bridgewater State University. I'm majoring in Biology with concentration in Biomed and Pre-Medical Sciences.
And I'm planning on studying at Boston College with a major in Applied Psychology and Human Development.
So the goals of the course is to teach students how to apply psychological concepts in the real world, like research methods, learning, sensation and perception, cognition, motivation, emotion, and personality right now, and social psychology. These are just some of what we've learned.
And we make our content meaningful within class discussions to really just get the content across. We've created, we've gotten a grant for career pathways this year that has allowed us to get brand-new equipment to use in our classes here, which has been really, really awesome. One piece of equipment has shown up there was the human-to-human interface that allowed students to use our biopsychology concepts such as the action potential and communication in the nervous system. We were hooked up to the machines that allowed one student to use their brain and move another student's muscles. And as soon as it was applied to me, I was like, I went up there in front of the class, and I was like, there's no way this is going to work. And when it did, I screamed in front of the whole class. It was really cool. I did not expect it to work at all, but it really did.
It's crazy.
Wow.
This is another one of our demos, sensation and perception. Part of it was with goggles that kind of changed the way you see the world. Another was that box in the middle there. You don't know what you're, you don't know what you're touching, and you have to use bottom-up processing to kind of feel the object, feel its texture, and kind of guess what it is you're touching. That last one is a smell test, which you don't know what you're smelling, and you have to guess. That one was quite eventful. There was a lot of bad and only a few good.
Okay.
What Emily's passing around is some of those mentioned goggles that change your perception. They can either shift your vision 30 degrees, or some of them can flip your vision upside down.
Take turns.
It'll be difficult if you're wearing glasses.
Right.
Anything to get out of it, I am. Oh, boy.
So what did you have to do when you had the goggles on?
When we had those, it was, one of the things we had to do was try and high-five someone. And there might be a picture on the slideshow. I don't know.
If we go back to your intro.
Oh, yeah. If we go back here. That's me trying to give him a high five.
And I'm on the right. We had to draw a picture of a house. As close as you can look at it, it looks nothing like a house. Absolutely not. Hers, my friend next to me, hers looked a little bit closer. Mine was, no, it did not work out very well. So demos used in class allow us to just get out of our seats and explore psychology in the real world, which is something we really try to advocate for. We get a hands-on interactive experience in class by doing so. These photos up here were taken by students to demonstrate the practice of monocular cues that we use to understand depth perception.
That first one is me and another one of our classmates. That's the concept that the distance makes it look smaller. If you ever heard of that, you probably have. Oh, and that last one as well is how you'll focus on the thing closest to you, and everything beyond that gets out of focus. This is the social psychology, which is how we see human behavior in the real world. We had a, this demo right here, I remember that one, is when our teacher, Ms. Donovan, had us, we had to get up, take our shoe off, and I don't know, it was just a lot of weird stuff. And most of us willingly complied because of blind compliance. And we talked about how that can be dangerous, such as, such examples as like cult behavior, where they'll just blindly follow. We also learned about group behaviors during a puzzle scenario where there are social loafers, people who don't help out in the group, if you've ever had someone like that. And those people also acted as instigators towards other groups. This was a test to see if the group members would mirror the behavior, or other members in the class would also just start slacking off or instigating in other groups as well. Didn't help, didn't quite succeed, partially because I was one of the social loafers, and I felt really annoying going up to other people. So it was kind of bad for me. Another part of social psychology that we learned is social traps. And this one was, this one's a bad memory, because we were offered extra credit. And, but the, the catch is, if everyone asked for five, totally anonymous, asked for five points of extra credit, everyone would get it. Or you can either get 15 points of extra credit, but if three or more people choose that 15, no one gets any extra credit at all. We had two opportunities, and no one got any extra credit. Everyone, a lot of people asked for the 15. And that's just more how people tend to choose short-term benefits over long-term for the group.
It was just, it was really funny how everyone had the same mindset. Oh, everyone's going to want to play it safe for the five x credits, so it'll be okay if I do the 15. And it turns out, most people went for the 15. So it did not work out in our favor. But I've shown up here, in our cognition unit, demonstrations in class helped us learn how our brains are learning without our conscious awareness. We were taken around the school, blindfolded, and asked to stop and determine where we were, just based off of just the map. Like especially, we're in a senior class, so we've been walking these halls for a while, and just seeing if we were able to know the place we were in the school without being able to see around us. We also learned about human fallibility with memory, which you can see in the picture on the left. When we're asked to draw a penny from memory, and thinking you would never have to know what a penny looks like, even if you see one every day. So when we were asked how to draw a penny, everyone was looking around like, I have no idea what to do. Because, yes, we see it every day, but again, it's like selective attention, when we're not focused on it. So it's not necessarily, we don't encode it to memorize how to do it.
Another part of memory that we did was, our teacher listed off a list of words, and we had to try and pay attention. There were two groups in the class. Half the class had to decide the importance of the items on the list. In a deserted island scenario, how important would they be to your survival? The second half of the group had to determine how many vowels were in each word. But at the end of the list of words, we had to perform some distracting tasks, like writing our name, our birthday, just talking to other classmates. And then maybe two minutes later, we had to try and recall how many words we could on the list. The people who were able to determine the importance of the words, they did better because of something called deep processing, as opposed to shallow processing, which is what people who tried to count the vowels did. When you process something not just based on the word itself, you memorize it better. Oh, the list is eggs, water, a coconut or something, you're going to remember those a lot more when you have to determine the survival need for it.
And another way that we use to memorize it is, we use the list of words, and we tried to envision a scenario in a situation that was very like common to us, like pick a spot in your house, and try to be able to place each object in your house. And if you're able to like close your eyes and recall where those objects are, you're more likely to remember them. Because you're putting them in a familiar situation, and it's just a lot easier to recall them once you put a meaning attached to it, rather than just the letters in the word itself.
And another thing that we saw in most of the times we did this, like word list memories, is the primacy effect, which is, we're more likely to remember stuff that's at the beginning of the list, and also stuff that's at the last, like the end of the list, instead of stuff in the middle of the list. And this is our AP exam scores from last year. And last year, our AP Psychology scores improved astronomically because bringing content to life helped to make that jump. In 2024, 72.5% of students passed with a three or higher. Our mean score for the exam was above Massachusetts and Global scores. And when broken down by unit, our students scored higher than Massachusetts and Global students in almost every category.
It's definitely, it's really been an improvement, just how much this program has come. Definitely, the teaching strategies have been a big help, just being able to kind of envision yourself in the situation. And it's definitely been proven to increase, like your recall ability of something, if you're able to make the situation more relevant to you, instead of just thinking about some random person going about it. If you're able to connect it to yourself, it's definitely a lot easier to connect it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you go back one for just one second?
Oh, yeah. Here?
Yeah, I just, I really want to stress how impressive that is. You went by, you went through it quickly. But it, so, as a recovering high school principal, one of the, one of the courses that, that you really want to see thrive in your school is AP Psych. Because of all the advanced placement courses that you offer, it's very accessible. So many students are able to take it. So sometimes your scores tend to be a little lower. So the fact that you have 48 students taking this course, and your pass rate, and your success rate is so high, is incredibly impressive. And I know Kendra Donovan is an extraordinary teacher, but you guys must be working very hard. This is the same curriculum that's being offered in Seattle, Washington, in Hingham, in Cohasset, and it's very impressive. So it's great to see that it's coming to life, and that you're enjoying it, and it's carrying in other coursework. But academically, this is a very rigorous course, and you guys are killing it. So it's very impressive.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck on your exams.
Yeah.
They're coming up, right, in a couple of weeks?
I have a question. Who was responsible for getting that grant? Was it you, Ms. Donovan, or?
So it was part of the career pathways program, which I think largely was supposed to be used for construction technology, but then that course got cut. And so pretty much anything where a student could use the courses as part of a career path, we got to use a portion of the money. So I was told to dream big, and just ask for whatever I wanted to bring the class to life, and we got as much as we could. And it's been, it's been great this year. It was a great year last year, but this year, we've had so many more tools at our disposal that have been really helpful, so.
That's awesome. I'm always impressed by how, how much work the team here in Rockland puts into getting grants to do this, and to take opportunities to look for innovative methods for teaching. And clearly, as Dr. Cron pointed out, it's paying off. So thank you for your hard work. Thank you to everyone who was involved in getting that grant. Thank you to the students for taking it seriously, and wishing both of you the best of luck in your career as you move forward in just a couple, few short months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
I, I hired.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
For the record.
Now, nothing from here on is going to be as fun as that. Move on to federal grants?
This is purely informative. There's been quite a bit in the news about federal cuts to states and so on and so forth. So we just wanted to speak to this briefly. Approximately $1.2 million of our funding comes through federal grants. We have about five separate grants, and I'll let Jane speak to them. But just wanted to let the public know, you know, what our connection is to federal grants, and how profound the policies that are being discussed, how it could affect us. It's about $1.2 million.
Correct. And so there are five grants that come to us from the federal government. They're in two categories, IDEA, I-D-E-A, which is Individuals with Disabilities Act, and ESSA, E-S-S-A, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act. Under the IDEA, the main one is the second, that's what we refer to as the 240 Grant, which is $700,000. And we use this to fund a part-time out-of-district coordinator. We run our extended school year program under this grant. We pay out-of-district tuition. $500,000 of our out-of-district tuition costs are paid for under this grant. The other IDEA grant is the Early Childhood Special Education, which is a sub-program of a federal entitlement grant. And we use that $30,000 to partially fund one of our preschool teachers' salaries. Under ESSA, which is generally referred to as the entitlement grant, Title I. Title I is actually Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. We only utilize Title I, Title II, and Title IV. Under Title I, which is our basic grant, is the basic grant to LEAs. LEAs are the local education authorities. SEAs are the state educational authorities. So we're an LEA, LEA number 251. And we use this money to fund four interventionists, three at the reading specialists at the elementary, Phelps Elementary, and one math and reading interventionist at the Esten. We do our homeless stipend, who has helped coordinate all of the activity, our recent increase in homeless independent of the Comfort Inn, a clerical salary of $26,000, and then our contracted services. And we're required to pay MTRS, which is the retirement out of federal grants. So for every salary that we pay, we also pay the MTRS benefit for the employees involved. The second one is Title II, Part A, and this is supporting effective instruction. And this funds the coordinator, which is Kelsey Holbrook's stipend for coordinating all of these grants, a paraprofessional, and then again, contracted services and supplies. Benefit of using contracted services in paying for supplies, and specifically in paying for the out-of-district with the 500, is that we save that MTRS, which is an 8% surcharge on anything. So by using the IDEA 240 Grant to fund out-of-district tuition, we're saving $40,000 in MTRS costs by having to pay for that rather than teacher salaries. And then the last, last one is the Title IV, which partially funds our site coordinator, and that is our, that's the student support and academic enrichment grant, and that partially funds the Bridges Site Coordinator. So in total, it's $1,210,510. This is what you see in our budget under recurring grants as part of our revenue stream every year. So we just wanted to, in case folks ask, what do we pay out of our federal grants? You now have a cheechy.
And also, just for the, for the public, when you, when you use the term like interventionist, what does an interventionist do, and why do we have them? Interventionists, and much of the spending that is done here, is, is preemptive. So the research tells us, we get in early with, say, speech services, or we get in early with a student who may have a reading challenge early on. An interventionist will, will work with the child before they get into the special education realm, which is more expensive. So when you hear the word interventionist, it's something that can, unfortunately, can be the first thing to go. But if it goes, then your costs elsewhere really go up. So it's, it's really important, important stuff.
Kenny, go ahead. Quick question. Obviously, these are considered reoccurring grants. Does the amount fluctuate year to year, or have you seen it be pretty stable of what we are getting from the government, knowing it is $1.2 million of our budget, and we've had obviously budget constraints?
Yes, this is, this is based Yes, this is, this is based predominantly on our demographic.
Okay.
As a high-needs community, it's a formula that data goes in.
Yep.
And the funding spews out.
Okay.
So we had one year where it was down, but for the last two years, it has gone up. We also are outstanding at expending it and utilizing it, and all of our reporting has been timely, et cetera, so we've had no dings for either inappropriate use of funds, untimely reporting, or budgeting for something and then using something else.
Great. Thank you for that. Any other questions? Okay, thanks for that update. Now, we'll go on to new fundraisers. We have the National Honor Society, the Rotary Cannon Bottle Drive. They are looking to do this on May seventeenth from nine to twelve PM in the stadium parking lot. We have a class of twenty twenty-six doing senior lawn signs, all signs to the senior class for graduation. And then we have the class of twenty twenty-seven, Spring Garden fundraiser, Rockland Garden Center will donate fifteen percent of their proceeds to the class of twenty twenty-seven on Friday, May ninth. It's the Friday before Mother's Day.
Three motions to approve?
Three seconds. All those in favor?
Getting our groove back.
It's okay. I'd rather have more seconds than no seconds.
Right.
And we'll move on to the surplus items. We have forty-one Rockland High School and Rogers Middle School cafeteria tables that were outdated and needed to be replaced, and we have eleven Wanger legacy band shells, the stage risers, and they'll be up for approval to sell. Any questions? No? Okay. I've learned in times past that when it's put up for surplus, it's, it's lived past its life and we've kept it as long as possible.
Correct. So as far, we only need action on the band cells. You've already approved the cafeteria tables.
Okay.
So we just need.
One vote.
A vote to authorize us to sell the risers, the stage risers.
Where, where do you sell them?
There are some interested other school districts.
School districts, okay. I was just curious, even with the cafeteria tables. Post them online? Do they have like a surplus?
Those we have been unable to sell or even give away to nonprofit organizations that we've offered, you know, if anyone needs cafeteria tables, and there hasn't been any interest in those. But there is interest in the stage risers.
All right.
Motion to approve selling of the stage risers.
Second. All those in favor? That's a vote. And now on to the twenty seventy-five, twenty twenty-six RPS school calendar.
Just two things that I'd like to point out. First of all, we, we begin the school year historically in, in the very same way every year. We have professional staff back, say, on a Monday, Tuesday last week in August, and we bring in the students for two days, and then there's a four-day weekend. So when you, if you can transport yourself to the end of your summer, you know, your, your students come in for two days, they go through all of the beginning of the year things, they get settled, then you have a nice long weekend, then everyone hits the ground really running the following week. So that had historically has been the way we have done it, and it seems to work very, very well. So we're looking at first day of school for students as the twenty-seventh. The second thing I'd point out about this year's calendar, which is unique, is around holiday time. So holiday break this year, because of when it falls, is actually going to be a two-week break, is what we were proposing. In our contract, we, the twenty-third of the school day and a no-school day. So by, by extending that to include the Monday, and then if you go ahead to New Year's, I think I would be run out of town if I asked everyone to come back on Friday the second. So it does result in a two-week holiday break this year, which is the first time ever in my thirty-plus years of doing this that.
Once.
We've seen a two-week break, but I think it's, it's great for families and great for kids. And so that is really the, the most unique aspect of this calendar. And I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say, you know, thank you to the community and thank you to the school committee for supporting our professional development calendar. It's very important to us. We use it thoughtfully and wisely, working with our staff, doing teamwork, curriculum, or special topics. So it is a commitment on behalf of the town and the community. When we ask you to have your kids for an extra half a day, we understand that means changes to your schedule. So we appreciate the community supporting us and that, we appreciate the school committee supporting us. But it's, it's a very good calendar, and those, those two aspects, though, I just wanted to highlight, the beginning of the year and this year, a two-week holiday break. I don't know if you have any questions or?
Any questions? Thoughts?
Last, I have a question. In October, the four-day weekend, because of the tenth being professional development, was that how we did it last year as well?
Yeah.
Okay. And then November, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, the half-day at Phelps?
Conferences.
Parent-teacher conferences.
Yeah, parent-teacher conferences.
And that's the same week as Thanksgiving, right?
Right.
I think they do that every year.
Every year.
That's their, yeah.
Okay.
I do like that Halloween is on a Friday this year, so that's good for parents.
Oh, yeah.
Good thing you pointed, pointed out. There might just be like some color coding issues, because October tenth is red and it indicates half-day high school versus October tenth being no school.
October tenth.
October tenth is no school, it's just, but the teachers have school, so it's fully connected.
But on the, on the, should be green then, so the bottom key says half-day is red, right?
Or is that pink?
Oh, it's, it's a color coding issue.
Yeah, no, I, I was think, I didn't notice it as green as no school until you read the, the tenth and the, the blurb that there's no school.
Maybe change the colors, like not pink and red, because they're so similar.
I don't know.
I don't know how many more colors.
And this was.
I know, that's very picky.
And this is just a first.
Read, yeah, yeah.
A first read, so everyone can review, and any questions or comments, you can shoot an email to Ms. Novio.
Sure. Yeah, no. One other thing, obviously with the two extra days, the eighteenth is a little later for our last tentative last day of school. It, it is, I mean, I don't think it's extremely late at all, but I think just making that known, that typically we're in the fifteen, sixteen, I think, right around there, but plus the five snow days, because we always like butt against the Juneteenth holiday, right? Do we, do we have a, a school extra day? But I just wanted to, to call that out. I don't, I think the two-week December break is very key. I'm already planning my vacation for December, so I don't think there's any complaints about that.
All right. Anything else? No? Okay.
So next meeting approval, so this will be the?
Yeah, we'll give you some time to look it over and if you come up with anything between now and then.
So a motion to table for now?
Yep. Motion to table the public RPS twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school calendar.
Second. All those in favor? Okay. And now we'll move on to the Rockland Daycare rate increase proposal. Welcome. Hi.
Hello.
Good, how are you?
But I'm Marissa Holdley, the director of before and after school at Esten Phelps, currently interim director at Rockland Daycare. So you have three items from me tonight. So starting with the rate increase, shall you say?
You can go however you want. Whatever.
Handbook.
Sure. So rate increase for before and after school. Esten and Phelps were looking to propose fifty cents for both programs. It's still comparable to Hanover. It's really the only town that's similar to what Rockland offers. So I think that is reasonable with contract negotiations coming up for staff and really the increase in supplies that we need to provide for the students. For the Rockland Daycare, it's tiered a little bit differently, mainly by classroom, what we're looking for to raise the rates. The infant room, we're looking for a fifty cent increase, which does bring it to ten seventy-five an hour, still based on other centers locally. There's not a lot of infant programs local to us, but we still remain lower than other centers that do offer infant programming. Our toddler classrooms, we're looking for a fifty cent increase, which does bring it up to ten dollars an hour. Still comparable, a little more than Dove's Nest Next Door to us, but we think it's valid based on what we can offer with curriculum. And then our preschool classrooms, we're looking to raise it to seventy-five cents. I noticed that they were cheaper than what after-school was, so I thought it made sense to kind of line them up a little more. So that would bring it to nine fifty, our preschool and pre-K classrooms. Still comparable to other centers that are on the rate increase proposal as well. And not increasing registration fees for any site. So that is what we're looking for in terms of cost.
Okay.
I'd also just like to point out, we, we also are continuing with the voucher program.
Yes.
At the, at the facility, which provides relief for many families.
Okay, that's excellent.
We have about fifty plus at.
I was gonna say, is it upwards of forty?
At Phelps especially. The Rockland Daycare has about five to ten families.
Any questions, ladies?
No. I think it's a great deal, actually.
I agree.
Watching friends and family go and find daycare, it's tough.
Thank you.
And then Paul's, are we talking about policy-wise?
Yeah.
So you're changing from?
We'll go for this first, and then we'll move to that.
Okay. Motion to approve the rate increase for the Rockland Daycare.
Second. All those in favor? Okay. Go ahead, and do you have a question?
Uh, no, I was just commenting that they're staying open fifteen minutes later.
Yes, so I proposed two policy changes. The first is to change the decline payment fee. It's three dollars and fifty cents is what our payment processor charges us, but I did research, other centers charge twenty-five dollars for a return check.
Mm-hmm.
So I thought that was a policy we could put into place. And then the second is, as long as enrollment suffices, keeping the Rockland Daycare open to four thirty. We have a few families that could push from four fifteen to four thirty, so it, it isn't a huge difference, but something that would help a few families.
Right. It is if you're hitting that last light and you're just trying to get there, right? From even work.
These people that just make it.
Right.
So I think that's all. Great. Any questions or thoughts on that? No? Very reasonable. Okay, all right.
Motion to approve the two new policies requested.
Second. All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you very much.
Do you care which one I do next?
Nope.
Okay.
What, you lead?
Sure. I have the Rockland Daycare Parent Handbook next in my pile. So I have revised the Rockland Daycare Handbook to align with the structure of the before and after-school handbook. I know you have it, you've seen a lot of X's. Our, last year, our lawyer helped us rewrite efficiently, so I've copied a lot of language from before and after-school, policy changes, and reflected it exactly the same.
Okay.
Any policies that the before and after-school program, the Rockland Daycare will institute. There's a lot in there. I can give you a few if you want. A lot of it is, so we charge a ten-dollar late payment fee if your account goes past two weeks until you pay. There's a language about behavior management policy, which has recently been important to implement at the Rockland Daycare. The decline payment fee will be updated, the rates will be updated, a lot of the language about what the classrooms are, what we offer, that's updated. Just a few. I'm not gonna go too far into it, but.
I have a question.
Sure.
I noticed that it looks like it's added in the event that Rockland Daycare is closed due to inclement weather, you'll still be responsible for daily tuition.
Yes.
And that's new?
This is new, this will be new for both handbooks. I'm requesting it because we still have to pay the staff.
Right.
So it's just immediately a loss on both programs' part. And again, I looked at other centers, we're the only one that offers credits, so we personally have to go through every account and credit them appropriately, but still pay the staff. So that is a policy change.
Okay.
And one of the things I'd keep in mind as well in consideration of that is, our program is, if not the only, I believe it is the only, that allows the flexibility that we have, that you only have to come two hours.
Yeah, right.
As a minimum. We don't require you to come all day, every day, or a three-day minimum, et cetera. Our, our minimum requirements are the lowest and the most flexible.
Right.
Around.
Instead of paying eight hours when you only need four hours.
Correct.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, I did ensure there's language, there's been a few questions this year, that it is a two-day-a-week minimum.
Okay.
At the Rockland Daycare, same as before and after-school summer camp.
Okay.
Yeah, it's two hours, but it's two days, six hours, right?
Two days, six hours, unless embedded in the E's program, chipmunk program.
Mm-hmm.
Part-time slots, we've had such a long waitlist, it's hard to prioritize a part-time slot over a full-time slot.
Right.
Right now, every room's at capacity at the daycare.
Wow. That's a sign that you're doing well, though, huh?
They are.
You're doing something right. They're lining up at the door.
Yeah.
I just wanted to comment that it seemed more direct, clear, and concise, and more comprehensive, the, having the handbook the way you have it, with the crossouts and all of that. I felt like you were just sort of getting right to the point. This is the rule, that's the way it is, keep on open, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's it. We're here for the kids.
There's been a lot of great improvements since, I know my two went there for preschool and kindergarten, pre-K, and that was.
Are you gonna get them a kid?
Now they're seniors, seniors and sophomores. So just the payment portal, I remember, you know, folded up invoices in your cubby and, you know, it was all paper and stuff. So I think the handbook changes are just following in line with all the great stuff that continues to happen.
I agree.
Thank you.
So entertain.
Yes. Motion to approve the changes to the Rockland Daycare Parent Handbook.
Second. All those in favor? That's a vote.
Okay. And the last one is the final reading for the summer camp handbook, which I think was on the last agenda, but.
Yes.
A lot of the changes are, again, same, policies, tuitions, dates for summer programming, the late fee. Nothing besides that has changed in there. It's an eight-week program this summer.
Right, nothing out of the ordinary.
No, we did, we're opening earlier, seven to four thirty, Lester's eight to four thirty, to offer more time for parents. That's probably the biggest change for this summer.
Okay.
Yes.
Was that based off, like, demand or?
Yes.
Commentary?
Yes, for people to get to work.
Yeah.
Eight to four thirty was hard if you have an eight to four thirty shift at work.
Right.
So seven to four thirty.
Makes sense.
This summer, yes. Yes.
Then, motion to approve the Rockland Daycare Summer Program Handbook.
Second. All those in favor? That's a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa.
Before you go.
Yes.
Approximately, how many students are we serving in the before and after-school program on a day-to-day basis?
Including Esten, probably a hundred fifty to a hundred and seventy-five.
A hundred fifty, a hundred and seventy-five. And daycare is serving, servicing?
I'd say eighty to ninety, maybe not daily, but enrolled.
Yeah. So I, I just, I just want to point out, Marissa and also Janet Tate, what a remarkable job you, you folks do. And, you know, this is a, this is a service. This is a, we're a public school district that operates a daycare, and the before and after-school program's a service, and it strengthens our district, and it's very important. And we've all had children in, in school, and having them in your home school for these services and being able to pick them up, and then, and the curriculum that you're doing, it's just, I'm very, very proud of the work that you folks do. And since you're here, let's take an opportunity to say thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
One more. The, the summer program, I think we were, the last time when we were reading it, the, when will that communication come out for anyone who's watching or listening, as people when will that communication come out for anyone who's watching or listening, as people are starting to plan for summer?
I've put it out to all of the families currently enrolled in our center last Friday.
Okay.
It'll go out public by Thursday before break.
Awesome. There we go.
Yes.
I just have one comment. I just want to say thank you so much for being so responsive to the needs of the students and the families. So, you know, extending the hours in the evening when it's reasonable, extending the hours in the summer based on feedback last year. As Dr. Kron said, it's a service to our families, but it's also so incredible to be able to have a service that does respond to the needs of our students and to our families. So thank you for soliciting their feedback, and to, you know, things are not always in our control to do everything everyone wants, but when you can, you clearly are. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Change is a lot of work with daycare as well, supporting.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Jane. Okay. Now we'll move on to the June 6, 25 Retirement Luncheon, an event pass for retirees.
This is my little pet project. Something I've been wanting to do for a very long time, is to get all of our retirees together for, at school, just for a lunch, and we'll have a couple hours together, and a little bite to eat, and some time to see one another, but also to update them on where the Rockland Public Schools are now. And it's an event that in my, where I came from many, many moons ago, we used to do, and I just thought it was the coolest thing. And so thank you to Noel and Jane for putting up with me, wanting to add something in June. But I'm really excited about it, and hoping that our retirees will set aside June 6th. And we're looking at probably a noon start. We're finalizing everything now. But it should be a lot of fun. So just wanted to put that on everyone's radar.
Okay. And then you want a business card format for the?
Oh, yes. So one of the things that Noel found that had been done elsewhere, that we think is a great idea, is it's an event pass for each of our retirees that they would receive.
Yeah.
To encourage them to come to sporting events, and music concerts, and things like that, and not have to pay. It's, you know, it's a little ceremonial. I don't think they charge very much to get into things, but we want to encourage our retirees to stay a part of the community. So I think that was a great idea that Noel had.
I agree. I think it's something.
And we need a vote of the school committee to be able to do that, because it does have financial impact.
A financial cost.
Yeah.
Motion to, well, how many retirees are invited so much?
Good question.
Am I invited?
You are invited.
You made the cut.
You are on the list.
I can't wait.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
And how frequently would we, would you want to do this every year?
I would like to do it every year.
Interesting.
They used to do a luncheon at the beginning of the year on the first day of school, and I think they ended that probably 10 years ago, because it's no longer happening. But it wasn't done by the school district.
Oh, okay.
It was done by a group of teachers. I know a lot of places do something similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice. So at least do a luncheon.
Hopefully bring some kids in to perform a little bit, and it'll just be a fun, fun couple of hours together. I'm very hopeful.
Yeah, and I think this is a great idea, too, to get maybe retirees in a plus-one to sporting events, and, not just sporting events, looks like plays and whatnot. So it's nice.
I think we see them coming, so I think it's just a way to sort of honor their time that they've given us, right? We're lucky that in Rockland, people do come back. They volunteer on the school committee. You know, they stay. And so I think this is our way to say thank you for all that. So I agree.
All right. Any more things? A motion to approve the event pass for retired retirees. Do we have to approve the lunch, too, or no?
Why don't we do it in that way?
Do both?
Yeah, we've done it.
Can I vote, or is it a conflict of interest?
It might be. I'd abstain.
All right, then. Motion to approve the 6/6 Retirement Luncheon, an event pass for retirees.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Thank you. Very exciting. Now, back to you, Dr. Kron, with your superintendent's report.
Thank you. I just have one thing tonight. I want to thank Jean Blaney and Christine Flaherty for their work. This is Mental Health Awareness Month, and they've organized, they have a committee, and Free Lahey from the schools is working with them, and trying to coordinate. As you know, we have many, many safety nets and programs in place in the schools, but this is something that Jean and Christine are spearheading for the town. And there are two particular events coming up that I just wanted to make the public aware of. It's called a Mental Health First Aid Program. So we're doing one for youth on May 6th at 5:30 in the lecture hall at the high school, so May 6th at 5:30, and then a Mental Health First Aid Clinic for adults, and that's May 14th at 5:30. So I hope that people will turn out for that. We're distributing the flyers. And again, thank you to Jean Blaney and Christine Flaherty for spearheading that on behalf of the town, and for involving the schools. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'll start to the left. We'll welcome back Emily.
Okay.
Are you ready?
I'm back. Thank you to my committee members for helping and letting me take time off for maternity leave. I don't think we have that policy, but we did it anyways. We gave you it for free. Yeah. So I'm glad to be back, and I'm looking forward to finishing out the year. And thank you, Rockland voters, for voting this weekend for my reelection with Melissa. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. I have just a couple. Wanted to thank everyone in the district for their support from the Athletic Boosters for the Wizards event. That was such a fun event, just with the community. We had over, I think, 630 tickets sold, probably upwards of 50 volunteers, lots of community sponsorship. So thank you to all of the businesses that, once again, continue to support our schools. So I will be submitting those completed fundraiser forms soon, so we'll have some totals for everybody. Also wanted to say have a safe trip to Ms. Walsh and the Travel Club. They are headed to Dublin, London, and Paris, and they leave on Friday. And I'm super jealous, but hopefully they have a great time and have some good weather. And then just enjoy April vacation. Everyone else?
Thank you.
I will also thank the town for showing up and voting, and the opportunity to continue to serve the community in this role. I wanted to congratulate the RHS varsity cheerleaders who received their state championship rings this past week, and they had a really nice celebration. And thank you to everyone who made that happen. It was really nice for them to be celebrated. And then, as a pediatrician, I would be remiss if I didn't remind everybody with the beautiful weather today, that for us in pediatrics, the season has changed from colds and flus to injuries. And so making sure that everybody is remembering to wear their helmets when they're out and on motorized or just wheels. So on your skateboards, on your bikes, et cetera, you only have one brain, please protect it. And sunblock as the weather turns that direction, or if you're going on a lovely April vacation, but trying to remain out of the emergency room when and all possible. That's what I have.
I wouldn't expect anything less. I was almost behind you, in your helmet.
I think it's all been said, and I hope everybody has a wonderful vacation, able to get outside.
For me, I would like to thank you ladies for signing up for three more years. This isn't an easy task. I know it looks easy. We sit at this table, we vote on things, we put on goggles and things like that. But sometimes, in this world, it could turn into a lot of pressure and a lot to carry. We are here for the kids. We are responsible for a $37 million budget. Lots of faculty, lots of staff, lots of family in this town. We walk out into Target, and we do get questions. So I appreciate this team that we get to sit here with. I appreciate you ladies stepping up for three more years. And I appreciate the town for believing in us and voting for them. So that's all I have on my soapbox. And so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
And motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? That's right. Thank you.